To order, we're at now 2.04, Human Resources. Sam?
Chairman Houston, members of board, 2.04 will consist of climate survey results and update, as well as retention, retention report. Dr. Burks, huh?
Good afternoon again. Thank you for this opportunity for us to provide you some information related to our informal climate survey. I have with me today our Human Resources Generalist, Amanda Schilling. She's going to help me with the presentation. She was the brains behind the technical aspects of the survey, so just in case you have any technical questions, she's here to support the presentation. It's been a few months since the survey was administered, but at the time when it was requested, there were concerns generally about school climate. I believe that school board members received some feedback from teachers and staff regarding climate. Certainly, the superintendent and the administration had concerns about the overall climate, so we wanted to basically have a quick pulse check on where we were in terms of how teachers are feeling in the district. As you know, the Department of ARA, formerly known SEES, they administer a formal, very comprehensive climate survey every year. That survey is comprised of information so that teachers, as well as students and parents, can provide the district feedback regarding climate. Again, this survey was a pulse check, a very quick informal, informal survey, and certainly is not as comprehensive as the survey now being administered through our Department of ARA. But we are here today to provide the results of the survey to you, and so certainly if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. The survey was opened for a week. We opened the survey on Friday, or I'm sorry, February the 14th, which was a Friday until February the 21st. And so I will allow Mrs. Schilling just to provide some information about how it was posted, how we ensured that only one person took the survey, those kind of technical things related to the survey. Mrs. Schilling?
Hi. With the survey, we conducted it through Survey Monkey, and we were able to send the link to the survey, the request for teachers in our district to participate with the assistance of the Communications Department. We sent it through one of those NPS blast emails where it went to everybody. In order to ensure that the same person was not taking the survey multiple times, we did only allow one response per IP address, kind of like your computer's unique fingerprint. In addition to that, with the window open for a week, we were available to troubleshoot if there was somebody who wanted to participate but could not. And in the interest of keeping the survey completely anonymous, we did not collect any information about the respondent's identity.
And we were very pleased with the turnout because it was only open for a week, and we have about 3,000 teachers, 1,314 teachers responded to the survey, so we were very pleased with the response to the survey. My team and I worked together to develop six questions that we thought would be, that would give us the information that we needed related to climate. We did some research about questions posed, if you want to get answers related to how your school district is doing, is doing with the climate area. And so we came up with the six questions to include, "I look forward to going to work each day." "I feel supported in my work by the following groups," to include teachers, my school's administration, central office administration. "I have the tools and resources required to effectively fulfill the duties and responsibilities related to my position." "I feel that the required mandates associated with my job are manageable." "I plan to remain with Norfolk Public Schools for the 14, 15 school year, and I would recommend Norfolk Public Schools as a place of employment to others." So if you will take a look at the first question, "I look forward to going to work each day." As you can see, of the respondents, 55.2% either agreed or strongly agree that they look forward to going to work with Norfolk Public Schools each day. And so I know there's always a question about the neutral staff members, and you know, the thinking is either no, you're, you know, you look forward to going to work, or you don't, but there could be some teachers who are kind of on the fence, you know, some days I look forward to going, some days I don't. So certainly, there are opportunities right there in terms of what's going on, why don't teachers, almost half, feel that they don't feel strongly or positive about going to work each day? The second question was, "I feel supported in my work by the following groups, other teachers, my school's administration, and central office administration." As you can see overwhelmingly, teachers feel very supported by their colleagues, by the teachers with whom they work. They feel less supported by central office administrators than their own school's administration. And so as you can see, there's a disconnect between the teachers and central office that we certainly need to address, and I'll come back to that at the very end when we talk about overall concerns. The next question was, "I have the tools and resources required to effectively fulfill the duties and responsibilities of my job." As you can see, 10%, approximately 10.6% strongly agree, about 38% agree, and then again, you have that neutral category of about 17% with about, you know, less than 35% disagreeing. So when we looked at...
So those numbers, kind of give us the what does it mean part?
Okay, sure. So I'll be more than happy to skip to the back. I'll tell you what all of that means. So if you look at the very end, if you want to go to the last slide, thank you for moving me alone, Dr. Houston. We were able to look at the comments. Now, teachers were not required to provide comments, so we just wanted to, very quickly, I'll just focus on the top five areas of concern. And so workload was the primary concern, and that was of the 501 responses that we received, 33 of the responses included issues related to workload. And so what does that mean? Basically, teachers feel that they're overwhelmed with the requirements of their job. They talked about having to do lesson plans, staying after school, coming before school to support students, even working on the weekends, having to work to juggle, being a teacher, and their home lives, things of that nature. So they just feel overwhelmed with their, the number of responsibilities that they have. The second area of concern, of greatest concern, was climate. And again, it, teachers talked a lot about building level climate in terms of feeling the support from the school's administration. It could be that they don't always feel respected related to the number of responsibilities that they have. They may not feel that all of the processes that we engage are not collaborative, so there was certainly some issues related to climate. And there's some other things that impact climate, like student discipline, which was mentioned as well. Building level leadership, that comprised 20.2% of the concern, and again, teachers feeling that things are top-down and that they're not always involved in the process of things that will impact them, and that when they voice concerns, that we don't always act on their concerns or provide what they believe to be viable solutions. Cab leadership, as I previously mentioned, was also listed as a concern, 14.8% of the comments of the 501. Again, there was a disconnect between central office and the teachers feeling that central office administrators generally don't really have a clue about what it's like to be a teacher today. They talked about all of the new responsibilities, the new initiatives coming down, and perhaps needing more professional development, or maybe not having so many initiatives at one time because it just, they just become overwhelmed. And all of this creates more paperwork for them and takes away from classroom instruction. And then the fifth area was resources. Under this area, there was, there were many comments related to technology, not that in some instances, they felt, they felt as though they don't have the technology that they need to do their job effectively, or the technology that they have, it's not necessarily up and running. It could be a smart board that's not been repaired, or, you know, things of that nature. And even paper, something as simple as paper, I know, you know, as a formal principal, there are concerns about how many pieces of paper the teachers are assigned monthly, and of course, principals have a budget, but the teachers are concerned that they don't feel like, in many instances, that they have generally the resources that they need. So those are the concerns listed on, in your report, as well as on this PowerPoint slide. You can see the other areas, but I just focused on the top five. And so the last page of the report, I wanted to focus on, what do we do as a result of the concerns, as a result of the climate survey? And so we've worked together as a leadership team to talk about what we needed to do, and I don't think there was one department that, there wasn't some comment about, you know, some areas that we could certainly, some strategies that we could implement to address teachers' concerns. And so basically, we came up with clarifying, clarifying the role of the central administration staff as it relates to building level activity. And again, that came from, it appeared that there was, again, a disconnect about some demands or directives some central administration went a lot, sometimes it's a building level decision, and perhaps in some instances, the principal, instead of, you know, feeling empowered to make the decision, they felt that decision should be made at the central office level, so making sure everybody understands their role. This is your role as the building principal, this is your role as the executive director, this is your role as assistant superintendent of human resources, making sure that everyone is aware of what their specific roles are. Monitor the support provided by the appropriate central administration staff to building level staff members, again, as department heads, ensuring that your staff members are providing the level of support needed for teachers to do their jobs and principals to do their jobs as well. Developing building level administrators to build leadership capacity, again, working with the principals through the Leadership Academy, through the principals' meeting, meetings to make sure that they have the skills that they need to build leaders within their buildings, because they will be the future teacher specialists and future principals and assistant principals. This is a very important one, not that they all are not important, but decrease the non-instructional workload for teachers. Again, I think we can certainly take a look at that. We talk about this in Cabinet a lot, what can we do, or what can we take off of teachers' plates and principals' plates to make sure that their jobs are more manageable. We also need to implement change after receiving feedback from a representative group of end-users. Again, we have data, we have lots of data, what are we going, going to do about the data that we have? So take action, like take action on the results of the climate survey. Effectively support the implementation of any change, including professional development. When there's a new initiative, there needs to be professional development to support that initiative. For example, SchoolNet came out a lot in the survey, and that was before teachers no longer had to do their lesson plans on SchoolNet. So we knew about the time that we administered the survey, that there was still a lot of anxiety about SchoolNet and teachers not understanding, and they, they generally felt that they did not have the professional development that they needed to effectively implement the program. Ensure that building level student discipline is addressed in a consistent and timely manner. Teachers generally have concerns about when students are misbehaving in classrooms and they're referring students to deans or to the school's administration, that each and every time, they take it seriously. Even if you have a teacher that's writing 10 or 15 referrals a day, it needs to be addressed, whether it be professional development for the teacher, if the teacher has classroom management issues, or if there's some children that need other interventions, that consistently administrators follow up on that and provide teacher support in the classroom so they can do their job, which is to teach our kids. Ensure that staff members have access to appropriate and functioning resources needed to perform their daily duties, and we've talked about technologies and other issues. And finally, this was another concern throughout, implementing instructional pacing guides, or this is a strategy that we're going to use to address the concern, implement instructional pacing guides that appropriately afford time for the volume of testing that occurs throughout the year. Teachers feel that they are overwhelmed with administering tests, whether it be district benchmark assessments, com informative assessments, teacher-made assessments, principal-made assessments, what have you. They feel as if there are lots of assessments going on, and they don't have adequate time to teach children. And so in a nutshell, those were the, the primary concerns of the survey and the strategies that the administration plans to take to address the concerns.
Thank you. Questions, this morning?
Dr. Land, you know what I'm going to say. Something I've been telling Dr. Land, and I hope, I hope that there might be an open line of, we've been listening and thank yous. The opportunity for your colleagues, based on what they've told you, to say thank you because you were listening, someone was listening. Directors were listening, the principal was listening, a colleague was listening. If there would be a possibility, and I'm not asking for this to be done, if there would be an open possibility, an open channel of communications, for someone to say, gosh, you listened, thank you. That, that could grow very well, that could be very rewarding. It's wonderful to hear things that we need to do better. It would be nice to have confirmation when one of those barriers were removed, one of those things were done, and the results were good. So what I'm hoping for is at some point, and Dr. Land, this sounds familiar, it's the testimony, it's the testimony of someone who said, please help me with this, and you did, and give them the open opportunity, not just waiting once a year. So that's just a speculation, a hope, a wish. Personally, I found it works. When you give everybody the chance to say thank you, said, you know, you were listening, it works well, and that can grow. Thanks, thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for conducting this survey. I think that it goes a long way to the teachers to know that we hear their concerns, that we've acted upon their concerns, and that based on your last couple of comments, that we're going to take action on the concerns. I think that in order to properly follow through on this survey, which I thought all the, the six questions were very good, is to implement it again next year, probably twice during the year, maybe once, a little bit, once into the school year, and then towards the end, not during SOLs, you know, obviously, might skew the results a little bit. And then try to increase our numbers again, because you said we had about 3,000 teachers in the district, and we got, what, 1,300?
1,314.
Right, so, so if we can try to increase it...
44%.
Right. So, you know, to increase it, however we can incentivize them to do this survey. And I do like the idea of having it on Survey Monkey and it being completely anonymous. One thought is for the improvement section, do we have any type of a reward system for those teachers who voluntarily participate in professional development? Because that might be something that we can look into, maybe the Education Foundation might be able to provide some gift cards or something like that to teachers who, you know, if they've attended six sessions on their own time, some type of a positive reward incentive system for them, and to be recognized, maybe at a school board meeting, you know, this teacher, you know, did X amount of professional development hours, and put their picture up at the front, and, you know, easy ways to recognize teachers for going above and beyond the call of duty, which I know all of them do that, but there are some that particularly shine, and then they can be examples for others, and it can be a positive reinforcement rather than, you know, why didn't you go to this professional development, et cetera? Just a thought.
That's a great idea.
Brad?
A couple more technical questions. Can, can you disaggregate the data to the building level?
Well, this, not, not this survey, but the survey administered by ARA, they will have one for every building.
Okay. And did I hear you right, teachers do not need to put their lesson plans in SchoolNet now?
That is my understanding. Linda Savigny, would you like to?
Sure. We were having some technical difficulties with SchoolNet in, in January, February. SchoolNet upgraded their system to 15.3, and, Dr. Bailey, correct me if I misspeak with these technical terms, and they, it began to malfunction with our system in terms of teachers becoming very frustrated with their new updated version versus what could be supported with our system. So to alleviate some of that stress, we reinforced the use of the template itself, and teachers are still completing their lesson plans, they're being monitored at the building level and being uploaded to each building's internal server so that principals and assistant principals can monitor those, and that was kind of the stopgap to get us through this year. SchoolNet updated their version to 15.4 last week or the week before, and everything seems to be working correctly again. We're still doing some additional testing on our end before we roll it back out to make sure that those glitches have been corrected.
This is more of a semi-rhetorical question, but I guess we can look at...
Semi-rhetorical.
I know. Looking at what are, we have lots of concerns as far as this climate survey, it's pretty obvious. But what is our circle of influence? What are the things that we can influence? And I think we should focus on those things. And I think Dr. Stewart was spot on when he said, just saying thank you, being nice, being a team leader, that something I learned from Dr. Stewart is find three things to say positive for every one thing you say negative.
He remembers a lesson, remember we got talked the other day at Dr. Houston's church? Dr. Land, they were, PBIS, he remembers.
Stand corrected, four things are nice. I don't have enough time. But I, I, I want us to look at what are the things that we have direct influence over? A lot of times, we can't change the workload, I mean, it is what it is. We can modify it to improve it, but the, but the real thing is, what do we have influence over? And that's, that's building the relationships from the top down and then the bottom up. If we can continue to do that, I think we can work through some of the other difficulties that we have through SchoolNet and the other, other items.
Okay. Courtney?
Have you shared the results of this back with our divisions?
No, we haven't. In fact, when we met with the executive directors, we talked about doing it at a principal's meeting.
And then how would it cascade down from that? Would that be discussed at that same meeting so that we can get it to the building level, to the teacher level?
Yes, that's, yes, so they'll know that we took them seriously, and they also need the results as well.
Yeah, and that's, I'm getting, you're getting to my point, and that is, it's one thing to ask them for data.
Yeah.
But we also need to return this favor.
Absolutely.
And say, thank you for your input, and by the way, this was your input.
Right.
And these are the things that we plan on doing in terms of action. This is our timeline and our anticipated hopeful result. So I think we need to be very clear that this is just step one of what we need to do as a result of this data, because I agree with you, Brad, that this is very interesting data, and that we do need to measure it over time consistently to see where the change is. This is baseline, we need to look at where we are next fall and then maybe next spring. But transparency to those who took the time to do it is key.
Right, we agree. And it will also be interesting to correlate the data here and compare it to the data that we get from the district-wide survey.
And, you know, at this point too, this is public information, so any teacher could say, hey, let me have at it.
Absolutely.
And I do think that we need to wrap around some messaging to this, that they understand the context it was given and everything else that we'd like to do as a result of the data.
Absolutely.
Ed?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about the test, about the survey itself. First of all, any way of knowing whether you're getting the respondents are teachers who have been with the district longer, or teachers who are younger?
No, we, we didn't ask any questions about, you know, have you been teaching with us from zero to three years, but Karen's survey does. Again, this was a quick morale kind of snapshot, and Karen's survey is very comprehensive. So you'll be able to disaggregate the data for teachers zero to five or zero to three, and then teachers, I think it's like five to 10, and then 10 and above.
Yeah, and we consciously chose not to request the location or how long you've been with us. Even without the request of any personal information, there were still concerns expressed in the comments. I hope that this survey really is anonymous.
And even the teachers' union called, organizations called, just to make sure. You said it's anonymous, but is it really anonymous?
And that's why we believe we, we received a large amount of feedback.
44% responded. You know, that's a pretty good turnout, right?
So the other question that I had was, in comparison, is, is this survey, I mean, for, for the state of Virginia, for instance, do you have anything that would compare to this? I mean, if you looked at what teachers are experiencing around the state in terms of these types of questions, is there any way of comparing that?
I'm not aware of any district-level surveys that have been administered, but I do know generally that there are concerns throughout the state, and not only this state, I know North Carolina as well. I just happen to take my kids there for spring break to look at colleges and, in the paper and on the news every night, there was information about teachers wanting to leave Wake County because the pay wasn't there, and the morale was not where it needed to be. So I just think it's maybe a national kind of issue right now, because there are a lot of demands on teachers right now.
Another thing is, what, what is it that the, we talked about, you talked about the decrease of the non-instructional workload of teachers. What is that? Could you explain to us what that, that non-instructional workload that, that is on teachers? I, I know that that's a dissatisfaction, I'm just not aware of what kinds of things they're thinking about.
It could be preparing reports, data reports. It could be meetings after school, for whatever reason. It could be participation on committees, anything that is outside of me teaching my children every day. Anything outside of that was kind of a concern, because they already feel that, you know, they don't have the time that they need to prepare for their children daily and to have other kinds of mandates on top of that, it just becomes overwhelming. It could be filling out paperwork for data team meetings, it could be for, just for example, PBIS, I just kind of threw that out there, not necessarily PBIS, but just paperwork, lots and lots of...
So the government and its team, according to this, what you said, the implications, the next step, are going to be looking at trying to reduce that for...
What can you take off of their plates so they can focus on instruction more?
Also, the teacher said that they don't have the proper tools to do their job. What, what is that? What, what are we thinking here?
I can remember specifically, paper was an issue, just because I can recall at one school, they mentioned a school, but I won't mention it, I think they, teachers get 1,300 sheets of paper a month, they don't feel like that's enough paper for them to be able to give out handouts, graphic organizers, charts, whatever, for the students, that they don't have enough paper, that they could need more paper. It could be that the technology that they have is not up and running, for whatever reason, maybe it's an infrastructure issue. Can you think of other?
Yeah, we, we had several respondents who were clearly English teachers, who discussed not having enough of a particular novel to be, to be able to teach it to their students. There were...
Textbooks came up as well.
Textbooks were a concern as well, that the expectation is that one is sent home with every kid, but they don't have enough to send one home with every kid, so...
That's very basic stuff, paper, you know?
And their comments expressed that they felt likewise, that it was very basic.
Thank you.
Okay, Rodney?
Yeah, I was just going to say that maybe a good discussion we could have is, one, asking Dr. King and administration to come back and just share with us their strategy to address it, and to tell us as a board what things they would recommend that we can do to support whatever it is that they're trying to implement. And then as a board, we talk about, you know, what we think we may be able to do, and then bounce it off the administration to see if that, if that makes sense, you know? I think trying to prescribe it here, you know, it's going to be difficult, but I do think that as a board, we have to talk about what we can do and get some recommendations on what we can do to try to improve it.
I think, in the meantime, reviewing those, I believe it's five or four policies that speak to climate specifically. that speak to climate specifically, just reviewing those policies to see, one, are we actually implementing those to their fullest degree? And then as we have that discussion, you just mentioned, are there other policies, whether revisions to current policies or implementation of new policies that may help? Yes, one.
Following PBIS, three or four requirements. Thank you for asking. Thank you for analyzing. Thank you for planning to do something, and thank you in advance for telling us what you did.
You're welcome in advance. How to do, Brad?
Thank you. Thank you for modeling. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have several others here. Out of two, four, and oh, five operations. Dr. King.
Chairman Houston, members of the board. Operations will consist of PPEA update. Dr. Simmons?
Dr. Houston, Dr. King, and members of the board, I'd like to give you an update with as much information as we can possibly share right now on the PPEA. I can promise you that next week, the next work session, we will have much more detail. On April twenty-ninth, we had a, a meeting, an all-hands-on-deck meeting, I'll call it, with all the principals from the schools that are under construction and all of the parties that are involved in the construction process on the S.B. Ballard side. We looked at, this is what the meeting looked like. The city was there with us, many of the city architects, and the people who sit within the PPA committee were there. And the session was led by Steve Ballard's group, his group of architects. And you can see, John Fowler was a part of our team also. He was there and has been a valuable resource to us for input. And more teachers and principals involved and engaged in the work session. The purpose of the meeting was to look at the schematics and talk about the concepts and, and hear from them regarding what their needs were as relates to school construction, what they want the schools to look like. And the follow-up to this meeting is that they went into each of the individual schools, and they're doing that this week and will continue next week, to get more direct feedback from staff. And they are modifying plans as they receive input. This is the Steve Ballard team. These were all of the people that were there. Principal representatives, people from the city, as I said before, and it was our MM architects, Walertot and Sadler, and the Livas Group architects. You've probably seen this before, but this was something that I could show you, the schematic for Larchmont. This is what the plot of land looks like. And the considerations that, you'll see more next week, the considerations are for where we situate the school on the property, where buses would come and go, depending on how many buses we need, and what the limitations are with regard to the land and barriers. So that's the existing site right now for Larchmont. This is the existing site for Ocean View. And as you might imagine, the school will be built off to the left side because there's more space there.
Can I ask a question about Ocean View?
Sure.
One of the, one of the concerns, and I want to bring it up, is, is, or one of the opportunities, is if we can, if we place the Ocean View school in a proper position, then we can repair and improve the, the Fourth View.
Road to the first.
Exit.
Exit, and the, and the entrance and exit ramp at Fourth View. So we need to make sure we keep that in mind when we do this. Now, there's, there's no money in the budget to do that, but if we can properly place that school, then we can fix a lot of things up for those people there.
Yeah, we definitely wouldn't be.
We have.
With the ramp.
No, no, but, but even, even VDOT doesn't have any money for it, but if we can position ourselves to help out that neighborhood, it's a, it's a positive thing for the community.
We have taken that into consideration, the committee has. And we're hoping that once the city makes this formal announcement, we can have the entire construction group come in to present to the board as a next step, if the city agrees. So you can pose that question to them directly, too. This is a Broad Creek Elementary School. As you know, nothing's on it, so that's, that's the site. And of course, the IB program, as we have discussed, deals with IB primary years program, finding out who we are, how we express ourselves, how we share our space here on the planet. And it has kids involved in creative, critical, reflective activities every day with instruction. So the, the construction committee is considering all of the requirements for what students and teachers might do from an interaction perspective, and this is really influencing our plans for construction. And they are listening to our teachers and our principals as they convey what their needs are as relates to space and concept design. These are the ten attributes of an IB learner, and these ten attributes are also driving the whole process, and you can see what they are. I think you've seen them before also. This is a Camp Allen site. We have done a lot of preliminary work on Camp Allen, so it is what was agreed to almost before I, I was employed here at the district. That has not changed. And of course, this is a 2080 split. The city will only pay twenty percent and the government will pay, Department of Defense will pay the eighty percent. But this is a Camp Allen site, and as you know, it's going to have to be a phase in, and there are lots of limitations with regard to that property that we're going to have to account for, marshalins and all types of federal considerations. And this is existing Capustella K eight site. You've seen that before. So STEM is what the conversations were around. How can we actively engage our kids in instructional process for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics? And so I can assure you that the spaces are being designed, the discussions are around how we can have classrooms that are 21st century, that can accommodate the needs of 21st century learners and engage kids in the technology process. Next steps, we're going to have follow-up meetings, as we are having this week and next week, that are site-based. Steve Ballard and his team spent the day in the schools yesterday. For example, community meetings for public engagement, and Laurie Crouch and Elizabeth Mather have been hand-in-hand with regard to planning that. There's a consultant that the Miles Agency is going to be the lead facilitator in these community meetings because they have a process that seems to work. And that lead facilitator will be collaborating closely with our staff and city staff to make sure we actively engage the public. So on, on the thirteenth of May, there will be a vote on the interim agreement, and then we can share much, much more information. And I would like for Elizabeth Mather to share what Laurie Crouch and you have agreed to with regard to public meetings as recently as yesterday evening. You have handouts to support what she's saying.
Yes. So we have been able to secure the community input meetings, two at each of the five facility sites. And you should have the dates in front of you. Those dates at this time are confirmed, and we actually, as of today, have secured locations for the Capustella and Broad Creek area look, meetings. Capustella will be at Berkeley Capustella Early Childhood Center, and the Broad Creek Area School will be at Richard Bowling for that community meeting.
The time should not listed, seven?
Six PM. Yes.
Is there no space at the birthday?
She has space for three hundred, and that was actually one of the larger spaces over on that side. Yes. We, we looked at several locations over there and ruled a couple out due to size.
May thirteenth, public hearing, that's at the, that's at the city council?
Correct.
And they're in their chambers?
I can verify that, exactly where that is.
The website, you want to tell them about that?
Yes, and we do have a PPEA website, which I believe is live as of today. We've been working on it collaboratively. There is a, the, the non-proprietary parts of the proposals are actually already on the city's homepage. If you haven't had a chance to see them, they wanted to make them very accessible for everyone.
Questions?
Yes.
A few things. One, I would wholly encourage us to hear what the principals and teachers have to say when they're giving their feedback to Steve Ballard and the team because they know how their schoolhouses work, and they know it doesn't work there now. And then when they see plans and they see what's being proposed, and they say it doesn't quite work that way here, that's not really what's going to function in our school, let's hear them. They know their schools. And secondly, can we, as a board, have a presentation or have an opportunity to look at the plans even before the public meeting, after the thirteenth, when you're going to, city votes thirteen, fourteen through nineteen? If we could meet as a board to understand a little bit more about what these plans look like? Personally, I've never seen an elevation of any of these schools. I've not seen what an interior would look like. And I think it's important that, as a board, we have input as to what these are, with maybe Steve and his team as well, just as these school folks have, so that I'm a little bit more knowledgeable before going out to these community forums, because I'd like to go to these community forums as well and hear what their thoughts are. But I can't be smart about that unless I know what I'm, what I, what, what they're looking at for the first time also. So as a board, can we consider that option?
I just talked with Dr. King about that as a possibility, if the board would desire that. And we will confer with the city and be prepared if it is the board's desire to do just that at the next work session, so that the board can actually see what the public will see before the public has those public hearings.
Just, just speaking, what, what date did you say, fourteen, twenty-fourth?
Well, the thirteenth, the city votes, and then the nineteenth is the first public hearing at Capustella, so it's got to be fourteen to eighteen, technically.
So, so even if we were, if we were able to do that and, and the folks were able to leave with us, Ballard and his team, we would be looking at, the fifteenth would be the only opportunity we would have.
Why not the fourteenth?
The fourteenth. For the fourteenth session.
Think that's part of our master plan?
Yeah, that's our master planning session. That's going to make it part of that.
We could do it there.
I think that would be part of it, don't you think?
They'll be talking about their agenda here in just a little bit, the master planning, so. Okay. Yes.
That's my question, my statement. On the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, and I know that we use the word master plan, it's just big ideas coming together. On the listing, it only says CIP, but I hope it's bigger than just CIP. I hope it's big ideas. What I wish, what I hope, is that we can tell everyone, the whole community, this big, long-term vision that includes the PPEA, that includes when things are going to happen, so that the whole community can begin being excited, as we are, about seeing all these things happening. What I, one product I hope will come out of the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth is being able to say coherently, look at the next five years and look at all that is occurring. Transformation Initiative, Master, Continuous Improvement Initiative is beginning in a few schools that could expand. There's so many things, but I hope that we will be able to talk about this now to the kind of difficult news. Last night, I was at a meeting, a community meeting, before the, the big announcement of who, who was elected, and someone told me exactly what is going to happen at Larchmont and Ocean View. Now, I didn't know who I was, and sitting around the table were a whole bunch of other folks, and they were saying, well, they're going to do this at Ocean View, they're going to do this. So it's, we got to, we've got to say what it is we hope will happen, because there are a lot of versions out there about what people say is going to happen. And what I hope comes out of the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth is for us to finally say, this is what we see for these sites and more, deferred maintenance, additional technology and everything. Right now, there are folks out there that think they know what's going to happen, and they've all gotten it from a high official in the city of Norfolk. We got to get clear, and we got to speak coherently with one thing. I really hope that that comes out of our fourteenth and twenty-eighth. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I would like to add, in relation to what you just said, these are preliminary plans. No one has seen final plans. And I can tell you, on April twenty-ninth, the actual cafeteria was totally rearranged based upon teacher and principal input. So we are in planning phase, and the important thing that we're doing right now is receiving information from teachers and principals. So even when they come on the fourteenth, for example, you may see something that may not be what the actual construction will be. So it's just open time for input.
Exactly. I mean, we're required by law and policy to do the community meetings as a part of the design phase. So, so there is no, as you say, specific design that is early. Those meetings and discussions are held to talk about needs, wants, interests, concerns, and what have you, and the designs are developed consequently.
I just hope we hit it clear and so everyone can see, so everybody can jump on board and be as excited as they should be over what's going on.
Okay. Yes.
Just for clarification, you said, remind me what the thirteenth vote is about?
The interim agreement that will begin the initial construction for Capustella and Camp Allen, Ocean, and Broad Creek Area School.
Okay, so it's, so it's the contractor, developer, whatever the appropriate terminology, has been selected and approved?
Yes, this is the final vote for that, for those three. The interim agreement is to get them started.
Right, because I, I remember, at least I think I recall, we were having some conversation at a previous meeting about, because we were, we were saying that Ballard had been selected, and then he came back and said, well, yeah, but there's still some, I think when Ron Williams was here, he was saying there was still some additional action that the city council had to do. This is that action.
Right.
So we're looking at these concepts with the team that's on the bottom of it, it's still preliminary, anticipatory.
Right.
But what the council's going to vote on the thirteenth is what makes it, what makes it official. Is that right? And then what we're, and then what we're talking about then on the fourteenth is getting them to come and, and do what? I'm not, I'm not quite following what we're.
You want to come to the concept, this is the only concept we have.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to figure out, based upon all the other things that we've talked about that we need to do on the fourteenth, what value are we going to get out of something that, as was just said, may change multiple, I'm just trying to understand what we're trying.
The value that you're going to have is all of the planning that the committee has done with the Ballard team and the architect. So you're going to know everything that we know and everything that we thought about and talked about, and you want to know that before we go forward with the committee.
How many students are going to be at each school, ensuring that Capustella is going to be STEM and SWM?
That it has the capacity for the number of children.
That it has the capacity for the numbers that we have discussed with John Richter, whether it be the K through, it's still K through, K through eight and all of them.
But it, I, I, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. Is it, is it informational? I mean, are they going to tell us what it is, and then we are learning what it is, so that when they go and communicate to the community, we understand that? Or do we have some expectations, they're going to communicate something, and we're going to have some ability to change it?
Yes.
Yes, what?
It's your opportunity for feedback. The question that Dr. Robinson asked is a key question, and he could ask that question and actually have some impact on a final decision about.
Right, but the presentation they give to us on the fourteenth is going to be the exact same presentation that they give to the community on the nineteenth. It's not like they come to us on the fourteenth and we have some input, and then something's going to change in terms of what they presented the nineteenth. Is that?
Well, we will provide feedback as a board.
That's right.
Get a clear understanding of all details and conceptual design up until that point. Provide feedback, and the advantage, as I'm hearing, is that we also have a very clear understanding of where they are, what's being presented prior to it going public in, in the community meeting.
Okay, well, I'm fine. I mean, I want to get the information. I'm just a little, I just think we should be realistic in our expectations that if we get a presentation on the fourteenth, that we're not thinking we're going to have some, I don't think we're going to be able to have some significant input on a board, as a board.
Right.
Because then it's going to result in some changes to what gets presented on the nineteenth. It's just informational for us.
Exactly. Right. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on PPEA? All right. Community engagement, and we need to, to the best of our ability, try to do these next few in the next thirty-five minutes. That includes community engagement, finance, and business.
Carlos can do that. I do it in five.
Go for it. Put on your phone, see the page.
There we go. Community engagement, Norfolk Education Foundation report. Superintendent's Community Exchange was conducted on April the tenth. It gave us a kickoff to the, several other community conversations that Dr. King had to give updates regarding the transformation plan, strategic plan update, focus schools, open campus, and also looking ahead for, for year two of the, the plan. The initial kickoff was at Ruffner Middle School, and Channel forty-seven did do a recap story on that. We're very appreciative of them for doing that. The next item is the President's Volunteer Service Award. I wasn't here last meeting to be able to give you an update on that. The next item is the President's Volunteer Service Award. I wasn't here last meeting to be able to give you an update on that. We applied for a application to the executive office of the president. One of the things that we wanted to do with our volunteer appreciation program was to be able to give some type of formal recognition in addition to the superintendent's letter. We have been approved as a site to be able to give the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. So beginning next school year, beginning on July 1, through our new noble hour service, we'll be able to track hours and be able to submit those hours up. And volunteers from the community, parents and so forth, will receive an official letter from the President of the United States as well as a pen for their various levels of service and the time that they put back in Norfolk schools. So that goes directly back to Plan 2.12. Evening of Excellence, which is tomorrow evening, that's where I've been during this process, preparing. We are not going to have a full-on dinner. From the feedback that we got, individuals are kind of a little tired of dinners. But we still wanted to give them a, an experience that was not necessarily in the building. So we are going to have it at the Half Moon Cruise Celebration Center. This is in partnership with the City of Norfolk. It will be a reception-style program. We'll start at 6:00 PM with one hour all the way through. That by 7 o'clock, we'll have a, and from all accounts, it's like the weather's going to be great. So we're going to have a reception out on the deck, right outside the Vista, right on the Elizabeth Forever tomorrow evening. And being able to say thank you to all of our classified and as well as our Teachers of the Year. And so we hope to see everyone tomorrow. Last item there is the NEF Second Annual Golf Tournament. And again, I say thank you to the school board for allowing us to have this tournament on your meeting day. And it is selected to be on Wednesday, June the 18th. Right now, the date that I had submitted this in, we had 114 players. And we are now up to 154 players in about a day. So our board is working. We're asking members in this room and those who are watching that we still need players. We want 244. We want to fill both shotguns. We have a morning and afternoon. And we want to make sure that Dr. Stewart has a run for his money so that he doesn't get the cup.
Brad's son.
And Brad's going for it, okay. Three feet here. So what we've got is, we're not going to give the names out here because we're still working on the marketing on this, but we do have confirmed three MPS alumni who are pro NFL players who will be there. And a very special one who didn't get a chance to make it here, but will be with us. And as well as a big announcement for the school district and some of our programming. As well as one VIP pro NBA player that we're working on, his marketing information as well will be another big announcement for that day. So it would, you know, whoever wanted to come on out and enjoy, even if you don't play golf, please come out for the 19th whole reception. We will have live music and entertainment and great, you know, just camaraderie amongst everyone at the end of the school year. It's the day after graduations, so it's a great way of saying thank you at the end of the year. Our goal this year is $50,000. We're well on our way. And again, our goal is 244 players. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Who's going to place her second place?
Dr. Simmons said she had already claimed that.
We're getting a team.
Thank you, Carlos.
All right, thank you.
Well done, five minutes.
All right, 2.07, finance and business, Dr. King.
Thor Carlos, that's T-H-O-R-N-T-O-N for the First Superintendent's Cup. My team is already programmed and ready to go. I was the ringer.
That's right.
I'm just kidding. Good afternoon, school board members, Dr. King. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for you, but you should have a one-page document at your place. Perhaps it's going to be displayed that provides a summary of our average daily membership. It's important that we provide that update because, as you know, nearly 60% of our operating budget is funded through state funds. And the primary, the primary means of funding schools through the state is through average daily membership or the number of students that are on the road throughout the school year. That pretty much drives the amount of state funding we get. So when we built last year, during the budget process, when we built this year's budget projection for state funding, we assumed and projected based on information we received from Dr. Bailey's office through Dennis Foody, we projected that we would have an average daily membership upon which our state funding would be based of 29,805 students. Happy to report that, again, through Dr. Bailey's office, our actual average daily membership for this year was 29,859, which is an increase over what we projected. So that would translate, and I shared with you previous, prior to the school board meeting, that would translate in a slight increase in those student-driven state funds. However, we will see some slight declines in some lottery and categorical fund as well as state sales tax. But the bottom line is that, based on what we projected for state average daily membership and state revenue, we are in a very positive position for this year, and we are pleased to report that to the board.
Questions, comments?
Juan. Dr. King has not had the joy yet of experiencing a state when its legislative body does not do a budget. It looks like that may happen. Would you please keep this board apprised of any special accommodations and particularly as it pertains to teacher contracts and personnel contracts? There's so much fear that starts surmounting in news media and on television and hearsay around that time. If you could keep us apprised of what you're hearing and what's going on, but I hope that you can help prepare Dr. King and colleagues of this because this is very destabilizing. And it's particularly harmful to, this climate survey we did, particularly harmful to the folks that we want to do the most for, and that's the folks that teach our children.
Yes, sir.
Please keep us posted because once it starts and it starts snowballing fast, we've got to have the right things to say.
And we've talked a little bit about it in our most recent cabinet meeting, that we'll continue to monitor it. The last time we had this protracted budget impasse, if you will, was in 2006. And it does have an impact on your ability to issue teacher contracts and to guarantee the funding for them. So we are, we are continuing to monitor that and we'll keep abreast as things evolve, particularly over the next few weeks leading up to probably our May regular school board meeting. We'll give you some more information on it.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Sam, any comments or remarks as we come to the end of the meeting and then we'll get to our agenda planning discussion?
No more than what has been placed on the table at this point. I think departments have been pretty thorough with their reports and there are no questions that would take us back to some of those other items. I don't have additional comments. Okay.
When the community is rallying, or at least some of the community are rallying in support of fully funding the school board's budget requests. What are we doing tonight? What's our message?
Both Sam and I will be speaking. Actually, we'll be the first two speakers for the mayor council. And as you mentioned, we are aware of some of the other folks, Education Foundation, the US Norfolk Games that will be present and some will be speaking. But nothing has been planned by us in addition to that.
You know, just, what's the message?
Well, my message, of course, as the opening message is a request tactfully to fully fund the proposal as it is linked and aligned with the strategic plan. And this is an example, the first time that we were able to say that it is totally aligned with a strategic plan in place. Because last year we had our budget priorities, and now we've made a step ahead. And I attempted to hit those key areas around which would allow us to pinpoint those major pieces. And so that's what we're, that's what my plan is during about three minutes, trying to get it into the three minutes.
Right.
And that's the point, that the mayor council would not just see our budget as a line item, but as an investment in the city. Now, importantly, as an economic driver, investment in the overall well-being of the city.
And I think we need to make it very clear that if they do, if they do fund certain portions of what we've asked for, for example, if they say, "Well, we're going to give you enough to start the pre-K program," that that's not how we are going to use those funds. That what we've, what we are trying to do is align the funds to the strategic plan. So what we've heard over the year is that professional development is what is absolutely critical for academic rigor. And so if they do fund us 302 million, or I think it was 311 last year, and so they give us an extra 2 million, it's not necessarily going to go to the pre-K or just to the open campus.
I don't think that's the message for me to stand and say in tonight's presentation.
Well, it may not be the message that we sent tonight. It may be important for us to just, you know, ask for them to fund it. But I think we do need to be very clear that we, we have determined as a board, those who have appointed us, that we have extensively gone through meeting upon meeting in collaboration with Dr. King's staff and with strategic planning, that there are needs that are going to supersede certain other requests. And, and, and we're the best persons to make those decisions. Because we're in the, we're the ones that are hearing the feedback and we understand the data. So if it's not a conversation for tonight, definitely in our follow-up conversations.
I understand, I understand your point. I think I was kind of zeroing in on one part of it, but I get the message though.
Right.
Your point is well taken.
In agree to part. I imagine if you took a straw poll of the board, everybody would agree with you.
Okay, Juan.
I'm sorry, mine pertains to agenda items.
Okay, just a second.
Okay, so we'll have a good showing there as well, which I think is important. Because also, you know, I really want to hear what others are advocating for on our behalf. I want to be thankful and appreciative of that and see how they're responded to.
What do you think of a standing behind Kirk when he's?
I don't know about that.
Well, Courtney and I are already dressed alike, so get your blue sweaters on.
Or frankly, you know, Kirk could just say, "On behalf of the board members that are here tonight."
Absolutely have the board standing.
Yeah. I don't want to look like we're protesting. We stay behind Kirk.
You don't want any signs. I'm sure there'll be plenty of them there.
Okay, well, I have to get this stand.
I'm not going to read the bunny figures over here.
Okay, so let's move on to our agenda planning. So there are two quick items that I'd like to try to get out of the way. That won't take very long at all if, just in terms of some dates. I need one more, though. Thank you. And this is just a couple of quick administrative items. If we could take care of this quickly, and our time is good right now, then we can close with our agenda planning. So, of course, we need to finalize the dates for the superintendent's summative evaluation. And according to our current process, we need three sessions. The first session, of course, is the presentation from the superintendent to the board. The second session is the board deliberation. Third, final session is the board presentation to superintendent. So as we look at our upcoming meetings, and I would, of course, suggest that we would need a minimum, of course, of one hour for each of those. If we look at the calendar and we work, identify the date that we would want to, the latest date that we would want to present to our superintendent, the final evaluation, we could work back from that date. We did have the 25th of June as the final presentation date. That's what we had on our original calendar for this year. So if we maintain that date as the date that we would present to the superintendent, then we can work back from that date for the other two sessions. Follow me?
Yep.
So our regular board meeting is going to be on the 11th, no meeting on the 18th, that's the golf tournament. So can we agree that we will still present to the superintendent on the 25th? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, what time do we want to schedule that meeting? Again, we would have already had the regular monthly meeting, so that would be the only business for that day. I'm sorry, right now it is, as I said, the 2:00 PM. So I just want to know if that works for everybody so we can confirm, and then we'll move back from there for the other two.
Just make sure I'm following. So on the, on my current calendar, I have the end year on the 25th, and then I have something on the 11th from 1 to 4 that says.
Evaluation, exactly. So that would actually be our deliberation. Then we wouldn't need three hours for that. But that would be the date that the board deliberates.
Tell me the time on the 25th again.
That would be the second meeting. The 11th would be the second meeting, and that would be prior to the regular school board meeting.
So we're just trying to figure out the first meeting.
So we can confirm that the date works for the 11th. Let's go back to the 25th, the last meeting, and just nail down the time for that. And then we'll, we'll confirm the time for the 11th, which would be the second session, the deliberation session. 2 to 4 is okay with me?
Then is something in the middle of the day better for everybody or something towards the end of the day better for everybody?
What day?
Middle of the day works best for me.
Can we even try maybe a 3 to 5? Is that too late for you?
No, that works for me. I could do 3 to 5.
On the 25th you're talking?
Right.
I could do 3 to 5.
3 to 5.
3 to 5?
3 to 5?
On the 25th.
On the 25th, yes. Okay, let's go back to the 11th, which would be the second session, actually the deliberation session. That's the day of the business meeting for, for June. And which would typically start at 4:00 PM with the closed session and then, of course, on with the rest of the business for the evening. Do we want to come in at 2:00 to begin to have that discussion?
I could do that.
Okay, is everybody good with that? 2:00 PM for the 11th?
So we end up doing 2 to 4 and then 4 to whenever?
Which one?
So on the 11th?
Yes.
2 to 4, then 4 to PPE.
Exactly, the regular business meeting, correct. Okay.
When do we have the recognition ceremony?
That's on the 4th.
That's on the 4th.
That's on the 4th?
Yes, after the, after the work session. Okay, so the date that the superintendent will present to the board, that evaluation would be session one. We start the work session on, and that's a long evening because it ends with the recognition ceremony. We start the work session on that day. I have 2:00 PM. Is that correct?
That's what I wrote down, too.
4th, that's the regular monthly work session. So currently, we're scheduled to begin at 2:00.
I've already learned over the past three years, and I put it on my calendar, 12, because I suspicion. So right now, I've already frozen 12 to forever.
So I know 12:30 is better for you.
I can probably do 12, but with advance notice, I can schedule it that way.
Okay.
Before that would be tough. At noon.
So start at noon.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So we can't go from noon till?
I can do 12 if we need the time. It'd be a long day.
Whatever the group decides, I just think keep.
There's no fluff in it, though. I mean, there are essential things that we have, that we have. I mean, there are essential things that we have, that we have to do.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. Tension span.
It's, 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 it's Dr. King's presentation to us, so does he think he needs two hours to do a presentation to us?
And I think we've, we've really kind of tightened up all of our processes, you know?
We have.
We are becoming far more efficient in our, in our approach to.
So you want to do one to two.
Well, now that, that nails you, that, that sixty minutes, though. I mean, you want to transition time because if you finish it up at one fifty-nine, you go right into your work session at two. So I would say twelve thirty at least would give you some time to eat a sandwich or a bite or something between that and going into the marathon work session, special recognition.
Okay, how about if we do twelve thirty then?
Okay.
Twelve thirty to two.
All right. Okay. So one other thing in the, in the matter of scheduling, um, you see on that same handout there, we were contacted by, uh, her name is Ms. Tanner, I believe, that, that did the training for the new superintendent evaluation. Has agreed to come and provide the training for the entire board. And you have dates there, and she was, uh, three and a half hour sessions, uh, long training. Was that a session, was it that long when you weren't trying to steal? And, and she prefers morning to come to us to provide the training. And, uh, you see listed there the dates that she emailed to, to me that she would be available, uh, to come and provide the training. So I know that we've, uh.
And do all of us need to attend, or what's the story?
I think it would be very useful, um, but, uh.
Is your goal to have before July one, is that what?
Yeah, yeah.
I could do it on the twenty-seventh.
Is that a world?
No, I can't do it on the twenty-seventh.
Are you looking at the twenty-second and twenty-seventh?
I can't do the twenty-second or the twenty-seventh of May.
Okay, so May is out. God, I hate to be the one that drives this whole thing down. Let's go to June. Fourth is out. The fifth, Thursday morning is what for you?
Depends on what time. I'm, I'm scheduled to testify in a trial that day.
Okay.
But that could change. I could tell them I'm not available.
That wouldn't be the guy in South Africa.
No, 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 no. It's a rear-end collision. You know what? I could, I could probably get them to change that, if that's the only date that we can do.
What day are you all saying now?
Twelve.
The twelve?
Well, we have agenda planning, we could probably.
I, I, I am out on the twelfth, cannot be there.
Okay. Is the nineteenth too late?
Nineteenth isn't too late.
Yeah, I'm all favor, nineteen works for me.
Nineteen?
Okay. Nineteen going once.
What time?
Well, she prefers to do the morning. If you're talking three and a half hours, I would say no later than nine at the latest, in terms of starting.
Or eight-thirty to?
How about eight? That would start.
Eight works for me.
That works for me.
We'll be done by eleven-thirty.
I may have a conflict, but I'll verify, I can verify tomorrow.
Okay. So should we tentatively say the nineteenth?
I just wrote it down.
Can we start at five A.M.?
Unfortunately, I'm awake at that time.
I know. That's my point.
The fifth?
Several of us are.
You said you could.
I have to.
We actually asked for that, and they said no.
I have to, uh, contact his attorney, but I could say that there's a conflict.
So we're not going with the nineteenth, is that it?
Same, nineteen not good with superintendent.
Okay.
Now, Sam, you've been, you've been to the training, right? Do you need to go again, or?
I guess I need to go again, then.
I think, yeah, this one's going to be more customized for, for us.
Oh, is it?
Taking a look at what we do now.
Oh, okay.
It's a good conversation by the time governor's team.
Gotcha. Okay. I didn't know if it was one of these in the camp.
Let me make a couple phone calls tomorrow. We can put in for the fifth, and if I have a problem, I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay. So let's tentatively go with the fifth. And as soon as I hear back from Brad, I'll notify everybody, and then we'll notify.
Is that eight o'clock on the fifth?
Yes.
I have people personnel at eight o'clock that day.
You can do that at seven.
As do you. We can, that's fine with me. I can do that earlier. Seriously. It's you and I anyway, I think.
Yeah.
So let's stick with eight for the training. And we'll speak for Dr. Harold Land.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we won't have many to do.
That's true.
So we're putting down right now Thursday to fifth. Okay. I said, I said this was the last administrative detail, but there's actually one more. And that is a request for an appeal, two student appeals. And.
Why do I have the recognition ceremony?
They're both long-term suspensions that parents are pretty much at the disposition, and the, uh, both of the students are currently serving the, um, well, serving. Use that terminology, but.
Carrying out.
Yeah. The, uh, the suspension. So, um, typically, too, we normally designate an hour piece for them. The only thing, uh, I, I could recommend would be the twenty-first right now. We don't have anything, wait a minute.
Session one.
I, I, I'm just confused myself. The twenty-first, now we scheduled session one on the fourth of, of June, right, for the evaluation? Is that right? Session one, June fourth. Okay. So May twenty-first, regular business meeting, we start at four. We could hear the appeals. We came in at two on that day.
I was going to miss that, but.
Okay.
I have to go to my son's.
What date is that again?
That would be May twenty-first. We started at two.
Not right until you tell me go.
How many of us can do the appeal, the two appeals on the May twenty-first, starting at two P M.?
I can do that.
I can do that.
If we have four, we can get it done. We have four.
I'm good.
Okay. Good enough. Okay. Appeals, two P M. on May twenty-first. Is it cold in here, is it me, I'm freezing?
It's getting colder in here.
I'm uncomfortable, I know you're cold.
It just feels like a stretch, it's cool out. Yeah. Getting, oh, you think it's.
Okay. All right.
Twenty-five minutes ahead of schedule?
Yeah. So we can move on to our agenda planning. Please note that, uh, I have signed and executed the V S B A contract, okay? So that matter has been taken care of. Okay, let's go now to our agenda planning, that we meet tomorrow morning. Oh, yes, there is one more. Yes. So, um, to your questions, Courtney, last week, Board of Distinction. So, um, the law conference, annual law conference that will be held in Richmond on June the sixth. It's one of those items on the list for Board of Distinction. It would require two board members and the superintendent to attend in order for us to meet that particular requirement. And that's on the sixth of June in Richmond. That is a Friday. I do not have, uh, eight fifteen to one fifteen. Yes, so pretty much eight to two P M. So I guess first question, since there's only one superintendent, can the superintendent call? Start there. Okay. Uh, the two board members.
I cannot attend. I'll be in Richmond that day for another meeting.
Okay.
You cannot?
You can maybe just sign in.
Sorry?
That's a Friday.
Aren't you two board members by then?
Yeah. This one's gotten so much governance. We should get extra points for having extra member doing governance training.
Okay, Brad can go, is it? I can go.
You can go? All right. It's a go.
That raises another issue.
Brad and, uh, yeah.
The annual educational, um, conference for V S B A in Richmond. What's the date on that? Oh, it's July, so we don't have to worry about that.
Right, right. I think, yes, I think that's the one with the new school women orientation and, and the governance conference.
Governance conference.
Right.
So that's in July, okay. So this is, this is eight to two on the sixth?
Yes, correct. In Richmond. All right? Good. Very good. So, agenda planning. Before I have to get a blanket and wrap up on it.
Something coming up. You want my, you want my jacket here? Put my jacket across your leg.
It'll be cute, Brad. Okay. Now, I'll give you feedback. Okay. All right. So, um, next meeting is our master planning. Now, I, I have both feedback from our last conversation last week on this matter, as well as a nice letter I received in the mail from a distinguished gentleman from Ocean View.
Ocean View stamp one.
Is that a new stamp? And I think we need to be very, very, very clear, and I know I've said this before, in terms of what we want to accomplish next Wednesday, so that, one, we can communicate clearly, two, the staff, any information that we will need to, uh, to guide our discussion. Now, these major priority areas, of course, include, uh, uh, pre-K, uh, C T E, open campus, deferred technology, deferred maintenance, deferred transportation.
And the whole, the whole.
Deferred Transportation.
The, the whole piece that Dr. Simmons says is on the thirteenth is going to be finalized. The whole, the five schools and everything. These are big, as Brad uses the expression, great, big rocks. These are the big things that we're going to put. Doesn't affect the, it may have some implications for strategic planning to make sure, but these are the big rocks that need to be put in a coherent plan.
So, uh, we already have reports on where we are currently in each of these areas.
I think so.
Well, yeah, we, we've received those over the last year a few times.
But they're not together. They're not all together.
Right. So here's my thinking. We would look at current status of these, uh, major areas, uh, current status, and then we would look at what, what is the, uh, desired status for July twenty-fifteen? Sixteen, seventeen, we're talking five years, right? Now, we may not have all of them in terms of projection on next Wednesday, but that's, what I'm hearing is we want to look five years out, where we are now, how do we move over the next five years incrementally, annually, to move toward our ultimate goal. So we would look at the current status of each of these, our pre-K, uh, C T E, where we currently, what are the plans for July, and then how do we move forward?
The five schools. This is just Warren for the past three years. I sent you mine.
Right.
Because all these things are in there. But there could be other things emerge, and it could, you know, the transformation initiative. This is just making sure that all the big rocks are coordinated.
Right.
And that we can tell the public, these are the big rocks, and this is when they're coming. I think there could be so much excitement once people see all the pieces that we know.
Right. And what I'm trying to get clear on, and tomorrow morning, when we meet for the agenda planning, we want to be able to say clearly, here's what this agenda should look like. Here's the information we want to, uh, if it's reports that we already have that we simply wanted to top of our email now, or we want to go back and get, here's what we need to be looking at on Wednesday, and here's how the conversation is going to roll out. And there's additional information that we'll need from the staff, or updated information, we want to be able to communicate to that, that to them tomorrow morning, so that we, so that they can prepare.
The reason why I mailed you that and made delivery of that, I want to put the big rocks down.
Sure.
On a fire, I want to see that by this time, this is when this is going to happen. And we got, we got a secret thing sitting there. We've, we've got a, we've got a bunch of things we've got to talk about, you know? There's things that we, we haven't talked through yet. And, and I, I just would like to see at the end of that time, what I've given you, a five-year span, and see when each of these things, when we hope they will be completed. And, and transformation initiative, there, there's going to be a lot on that. It just, we don't really have it together as a plan, and the community can't get excited over it with us unless they know it.
So reports that we will need will be the five-year budget outlook that we put together. We'll, we'll need a facility maintenance plan.
Rex gave that, yeah.
Which we have.
Yeah.
We, we have the technology plan.
Right.
Transformation plan.
The transformation plan. You know, we need an updated version of what we received, right? Or did we get that yet?
It's actually, it's a little articulated here.
Okay.
This was a handout last night, the night before.
Okay.
But we've got to have time to talk about this. One of the things that we don't have time to do is to talk.
And I'm thinking that we probably don't need that much, we don't need presentation, we need discussion.
Yeah, that's.
Amongst, amongst.
It's a working session of us discussing like we are right now.
Right.
Exactly. And so, and I'm, I'm thinking more information than presentation. And again, most of the information that we need, we have already.
Right. These are the things that we just need to pull together.
But we would need to have it in front of us.
Right.
For our conversation.
Right.
And I think the discussion would, would drive the need for more information, and that could lead to the next planning meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Excellent.
So I think, I think instead of relying on getting presentations.
Don't want presentations.
I, I agree.
No, no.
And you don't want to do the presentations. But if we could, we could discuss it and then, then make determinations on what more information we need, then we can ask for it. And then they'll have three weeks to prepare, or two weeks to prepare for it.
Dr. Simmons, do you have any more of those handouts that Courtney has?
Yes. Although, to, to Noel and Ed's point, we probably need also, was there anything planned out past year that wasn't included on this document?
That document is kind of the overview.
Yeah, exactly.
The theme and the big ideas associated with the generic timeline.
Right.
We can provide for the board a more specific timeline.
Yeah, I think that's what we need.
Now, there, there is one presentation that we talked about that we may want to consider. And that is because the, the, there's going to be a presentation to the city council, and they're going to be voting that night before on the, uh, construction, on the P P E Act.
Yes.
So we'll probably need information on an update for that.
Is that what we said you were going to get earlier?
Yeah, we're getting that, that day, at that time.
I just want to make sure that it's on the agenda.
Yeah, good point.
Right. And we, and we want to time, time it out, so we want to designate an hour for that right now. We, uh, the meeting is planned for two.
I have two thirty for some reason.
What, what, what date are we talking about now?
I have two thirty to six, right, two thirty to six.
What date are we talking about, the fourteenth?
Because there's the, the ribbon cutting for the governor's school.
Do we need to do anything earlier than that, so you can be there?
I can, I can start early.
Well, we were, we can start earlier because, um, um, somebody had a work conflict, I think.
Yeah, we started at two thirty for a reason. Oh, that was me.
Yeah, because originally it was eight.
It was me.
Originally it was at eight.
But it still is me, actually. I have it in my calendar. So it was good for me for the afternoon on the fourteenth versus twenty-eight.
Well, I have to be there at five, so I'll probably leave here at, you know, four thirty.
You may be leaving for another.
So are we talking two or two thirty?
Two thirty. Two thirty start. So maybe we lead off with the P P A update for an hour, two thirty to three thirty, and then from three thirty to six.
And if, and then if, then we can catch Noel up to speed on whatever she misses on the fourteenth, and then prep for the twenty-eighth, again, depending on delivery time. I'm going to tell you if you could, if at all possible, touch bases with them this evening because the agenda planning is tomorrow morning.
Uh, well, I'll just.
Thank you.
Would you like for the city to be there too?
Who?
The city representatives to join in case there are other questions or just fouls.
Sure.
No, or no foul, yeah?
Sure.
You know, what would help a lot, Dr. Simmons, is tomorrow, I was going to bring this up in the construction committee, but what would help right now in forecast of that is for all the schools that are dealing with in the P P E A. If you had it plotted out, we start construction here, we finish construction here, just so that they could be put on the big rock table first, so we'd see when all of that is going on. Just think about how powerful the public is going to get behind that when they see all of that. If that could start off, if we could have this document with that starting off, so we can see all those big monuments, I'm calling them milestone. I don't want to say master planning, because what come out of this may be a result in something that needs to be added to, augmented, or embellished in, in the strategic plan, but that would be very helpful if that, if that was where we started. If we, and that should be easy to do, true? By the fourteenth?
I will find out. I, I think optimistically that it can be done, yes, but I will verify it.
And it's not a promise. It's not, we know we're going to start on this date and finish on this date. It is a speculation. It is a hope, so that we can begin looking at how to coordinate all the other things.
Exactly.
You know about open campus.
Yes, I do.
You can put that down.
Okay.
So, um, I'm going to divide this list in half for the two sessions. I, I, I'm up to, right now, I'm up to nine items, okay?
Of information that we would be receiving in advance of the meeting, because we already have them.
Well, we have the information already.
Yeah, just get them...
The other items I have currently, in terms of those big rocks, as you described, Warren, five-year budget outlook, technology, maintenance, pre-K, professional development, construction timeline of the, of the, uh, of the new schools, C T E, and open campus. That's nine items alone. Okay? Um, so we will determine, uh, which ones, which ones will go on, uh, next Wednesday's, um, uh, agenda, and make sure we have, uh, know exactly what information to bring along with us, and if there's something we need re, resent to us, and we could easily have, you know, since that information's already been, been, um...
It doesn't go in half, though. You know, it's like, you ever seen, you ever seen on the Ed Sullivan Show where the guy puts a plate on, on a, I don't know, stick and starts spinning it?
He said it doesn't go in halves?
It does not go in halves.
No, it's going to talk about the whole thing.
Yeah. It's, it's not, you don't talk about half of them, no. You got to see them all together. You got to see everything together.
The other thing is, I would recommend that we use that room so that we can use that whiteboard.
Yeah.
And project up your master planning document.
And maybe charts. Maybe we have chart stands.
Exactly, because we're going to have to start filling in, basically, it's like an enormous work plan. It's like a Gantt chart, right?
That's what, did you hear what she just said?
Yeah, sure.
That's what one has on the back of it, is, is, uh, mailing the Gantt chart.
That's just the easiest thing for me to choose. You can choose any way of charting it you want, but that, that's just one, one way I've succeeded in the past.
Okay.
Thanks for listening to this. I've been hoping for this for three years. This is exciting.
This is, this is your time, man.
My time.
Your time.
My time. I swear.
Okay. Um, for the, all right, so I'm, I'm clear on the master planning, um, uh, for our discussion for tomorrow morning, and the twenty first, we'll just hit this quickly, this is about the last thing we need to look at. Currently, if you, uh, if you are on board docs and you're looking at the agendas, as you look at the twenty first, um, is the regular business meeting, and currently, there are no additional items other than the regular reports such as monthly finance report that we would receive. Uh, so the question I would ask, uh, are there some items of interest that would be appropriate according to our new format for the twenty first that we would want the staff to prepare, to prepare in the way of presentations? Now, as we moved into the year, we've already had our summer school report, we've already had the climate report, um...
When do we expect for the major climate report to be completed?
Summer, Dr. Burson?
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually parent support.
Oh, it's camps, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sometime during the summer, we just want to be able to capture the results from our parents' survey along with the teachers and students.
Okay.
Okay, um...
That meeting is going to start by four, by the way, right?
No, actually, we, we got the student, uh, appeals, so we'll start at two.
Two, yeah, okay.
I'm on twelve.
Okay, and, and, and so if you think of, you know, items for the twenty first, uh, I'd just ask you to email, uh, me. Because that, that, that meeting is pretty, uh, quick and clean, a business meeting, and so there's going to be a lot of things we add to that agenda, but, uh, we did mention recognitions. Now, um, do you, do you have already, uh, an idea of number of recognitions for that June fourth?
The June fourth, I have a guess.
Okay. Okay. Because we, we had discussed at one, one point, moving those to, at least some of them to the business meetings. But, uh, probably it's going to be quite a bit, I would imagine, on the fourth, because we haven't done, done it through the, did we have one early this year? I think we had one in the fall.
Yeah, yes, we did.
Yeah. And last year, I think we had three or four, the last four, four of the years we, we were doing it quarterly, and so... And then I know we talked about streamlining, even, you know, the awards, because we were, we were doing recognitions for almost everything, you know? The, uh, teacher ate all of the lunch. Come on up, get your award. I'm sorry. I thought you had a question.
No.
I thought I saw a handover.
I did.
Um, you were talking about the twenty first agenda. In all of the meetings, I didn't, um, see where we would have additional conversation as the budget makes its way through.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know how, you know, what the current schedule is, but maybe on the twenty first might be, I know the council has scheduled certain work sessions, but it seems like somewhere in between tonight and June, early June, we should be in a better position to know...
Yeah.
Or begin to have discussions about where we are, either, you know...
What did they vote on?
Yeah, their vote would take, I believe, on the twentieth?
Yeah, I think they have a work session next week following tonight, and then they have, I just, I think they vote the following, am I correct on that?
Yeah, I believe you're right. The twentieth, I believe, I believe that they, they will vote.
When they will vote on the, their budget.
When, when are they having their work session?
Next Tuesday.
Next week, okay. All right, at least they're having a public hearing.
Right, it's subsequent to public hearing.
Okay.
So, that might, and I assume we would have at least some preliminary idea of what, uh, what's going to happen. We need to be prepared for that.
Be a placeholder for that.
Yeah.
So not a formal presentation during our formal board meeting, but maybe something prior to, or...
Yeah, I don't know where the...
Yeah.
Because it's a, because it's a business meeting.
We have the master planning meeting scheduled for the twenty eighth. We could make room in that discussion, but I mean, we...
See, that was my point earlier, that, like, when we were talking about adding ballot and adding these other things, it just, it gets some ability, so we got to pick some things and try to nail them down.
So we're scheduled for one to six on the twenty eighth. Personally, I think that would be the ideal time for us to have that discussion.
That just means then that what, whatever, whatever was originally conceived for these, for this master planning, we plan on getting done on the twenty first, I mean, on the fourteenth.
And the twenty eighth. We're not going to talk about budget for six hours.
Yeah, we, we're scheduled for one to five on the twenty eighth.
I don't know what it is, I don't know. I don't know.
The administration is going to come back with some suggestions on what we do, and then...
Yeah, so you've got, so you've got the conversation around, uh...
I think nine minutes, I think we need to designate nine minutes on the twenty eighth.
I'm just saying, you have the conversation around whatever the city council action takes, and then whatever preliminary update or preparation we need to be aware of if the state is still at an impasse, and if it, uh, you know, based upon what we have there now, if it involves, you know, any type of, uh, personnel matters, personnel decisions, you know, you got policies and stuff, so we don't know, but we know where it is right now, we know where the state is right now. So if nothing changes, somewhere we have to be prepared to start to have that conversation based upon whatever the administration comes back and tells us.
I, I have a sneaky suspicion that we won't, wouldn't be making any major decisions that night on the twenty eighth, resulting from that.
Right, and I was making a decision.
We're just bringing up the conversation and, and starting to figure out what we're going to do.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have long after, because, I mean, we'd have to make decisions.
June, yeah, absolutely.
The time will go by, and we've just scheduled about fifty meetings in June already.
And I put all those, uh, when you, when you start putting all those, um, conversations with the public, that calendar gets filled up pretty quick. My calendar is now packed.
Is it your proposal, Mr. Jordan, that we do it before we begin the, the, uh, discussion on the twenty eighth? Because, see, it could enhance what, what is, we're looking for long-term planning.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm just, yeah, that's a good point. I was just making sure that we didn't forget about it. But I think, I think the comment you made makes sense.
Could we start, I think it should go first, because it could, it could advise that, that which we're thinking of. Are you thinking, since I already had on my schedule twelve to five on that day, and you, you want me just to keep it that way? See, you learned something.
No, we're trying to avoid that. We're, we're trying to not do that. That's what, that's what Gina and Deborah were trying to, to, we, we, we need to think smarter, and...
Do you want to take time away from the master discussion?
Well, maybe it just needs to happen during the master discussion time.
A lot of it depends on how much we get done on the...
Yeah, we do good work next Wednesday.
Right.
You know?
I think for the sake of time, we just need to put something on the twenty eighth at the start of the meeting that we're going to talk about later.
And I would designate at least sixty minutes.
And I think it needs to go, I want it to go first. I don't want it to go after, I don't want to talk about long-range planning and go back, oh, you know.
No, no, it will be before eight on the agenda.
So what are we going to talk about, some of the policies related to climate, as we discussed? Would it be something that, right now, should we resent those policies so that we can all refresh ourselves with those, and then...
I think a policy review committee would be...
And then think about when we want to talk about those policies. I'm not suggesting a certain date, but I don't want to lose that.
These policies here listed?
No, she's talking about the, the policies considered directly concerning...
Yeah.
Got you.
That we review those to make sure that we understand them, and we need to modify them.
Right, I'm not suggesting we review them even together, we can just look at them in advance and have a discussion about them at some point.
Would you suggest a com, a, a subcommittee to look at them and make recommendations, or do you want to do it as a committee as a whole?
I just think we, we probably just all need to review them.
Yeah, I think...
It's only a couple, right? Six or so?
Yes, it's, it's four of them.
Four, we can just review them and then jot down notes and have a discussion during the personnel, during the personnel portion of a work session. Slide it in there where it should be, sorry.
You're right. I agree. Okay. And, um, I think there's some policies we need to follow up on. Linda?
Yes. And for...
And your teaching and learning? Okay.
Are we facing a unique timeline on that, that we need to act on those sooner than later?
No.
Okay.
Just have to get the regulations.
Okay. Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
I have something.
Yes.
Apologize. I go back four years. Four years ago, a great deal of issues were being discussed in the system regarding school safety. I think Dr. King, uh, has responded in big ways on big items regarding school safety that have been very positive. Three years ago, when I came on the board, working with Michael Spencer at the end of the school year, and if Ms. Mather were here, she could confirm all this, uh, but you may remember, what we did was a letter to all students saying, if you notice anything wrong in your community, please use the crime line number. Do you remember that letter?
Yes.
We did it with interim police chief and interim superintendent. Last year, Dr. King did it with police chief and himself. I gave it to him a few months ago, he turned it over to Ms. Mather. They're planning that again. What I'd like, and I'd like to consider under community engagement time, five or ten minutes where I could explain this further, I'd like us to talk about what we could do something similar during the school year. Here's how it goes. Uh, Ms. Mather, I'm talking about the letter from the police chief and the superintendent at the end of the year?
Yes, sir.
Remember that?
Yes.
Got it. She did it for three years. Uh, I would like to talk about how we could do something during the school year, and I would like to present some ideas. Uh, Union Beach has initiatives going on, and here's how it might go. Right now, at the end of school, we, we, uh, ask all students to be the eyes and ears of safety in their community. Texting is just amazing. It has turned in names that have resulted in safety being increased in this community enormously. How do I know? Because I sit on that board, and we pay the rewards for it. If we could try and turn all of our students loose on making a safer community, a safer school community, not just in the summertime, but during the school year, that's the topic I would like a few minutes to present an idea on. And then, in June, it has time to work its way through the leadership team, through the directors and other people, to talk about whether there is anything that could be done during the school, not just over the summer, that would turn loose all of our students, thirty-plus thousand students, loose on creating a better, safe community at the same time a school community. One caveat, in first year I was on the board, we saw all these films of terrible things that had happened in the hallways. Those things came from home. They came from the community. The criminal activity that was brought to the school didn't occur because of the school. It occurred in the community. If our students are part of the solution, I think much school safety could be enhanced, much community safety. I'd just like a few minutes, and the time that I would like to request it would be on June fourth, under community engagement time, but I could do it anytime. Thanks for listening. And again, other school systems do many things like this. I don't want to brag about them, because I think we can, we're doing something very good now. That the letter turns, uh, students loose, and I can tell you the texts come in. Students are eyes and ears into the safety of this community.
And then can I also just separate apart from that, but, um, to the good of the whole, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge, this is, what, National Teacher Appreciation Week? So I've been to various schools this week for a variety of reasons, and I just was really pleased to see all the parents walk in and the children with flowers and gifts, and clearly they were going to acknowledge the great work of our teachers, so I think we should as well here. And then secondly, if we're not mistaken, Norview and Maury were ranked by U S News and World Report, correct?
Yeah.
So I think that's a great, great opportunity for us to tell the community how great our high schools are, too, we're nationally ranked. And so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge those. I know we will in other forums, but that was a recent accolade that I think we should be very proud of.
Thank you. Absolutely. Okay, anything else? Okay, wonderful. Thank you all who stand adjourned, and, uh, I'll see some of you in a little while, and others next week.